I'll introduce myself first. My name's Jim Mossman and this is...
My name is Craig Jones.
And we're both residents of Longview and I've lived in Longview for five years and Craig, you've been...
Relatively new, I've lived here three years.
Three years, okay. And Craig has his children going to the Longview School District and I have two grandchildren going to Columbia Heights. So, I just want to introduce myself. I have a master's degree in special ed. I also have a BA in sociology, an AA in psychology. I have three credentials, a credential for supervising teachers or an administrative credential, elementary credential, a middle school and a senior school credential. I've taught for 40 years. I've taught every class from kindergarten through 12th grade. In 40 years, I've also taught adult education and bilingual programs. I've also had the opportunity to be part of the PQR, as a program quality programs for the county of Los Angeles, where I go in and evaluate schools that are failing and to see how they could get back up and not be closed. I've been subbing in this district off and on for about three years. I've been in every school, every high school, middle school and elementary school. I have some opinions as an observer from the inside but also from the outside. One of the big issues I find is that there tends to be a disconnect in communications between the superintendent's office and the teacher in the classroom. Okay, Craig, do you have any...
Yes, so you're running for position two on the school board.
That's correct.
Obviously you have some ideas that you feel that you can bring to the school board to make changes here, otherwise you probably wouldn't be running. So, could you tell us what changes you would propose to bring to the school district?
Well, I was part of the strategy committee for two years and as part of the strategy committee, a citizens group that goes through and visits all the schools and looks at the curriculum and has testimony from the principal and the teachers and the parents. I was that for two years. I kept my materials instead of turning it in and when I evaluate something, I write notes. I kept my... I was also on the committee to see whether or not to close the school down. I did go through all the data and came to the conclusion that it should be closed down. My problem I find is a strategy, a winning strategy. When I look at the growth and the testing, the AYP testing over the last four to five years, I find that the scores tend to plateau au grand. One possibility is that when I was part of the interviewing process three years ago, each school had a consultant from the outside coming in telling the teachers what to do, how to do it, when to do it. My comment on my notes at that time and a recommendation of our committee was that to make sure that each one of these specialists, these consultants, would have some sort of strategy that would lock together between elementary, middle and high school. That was the recommendation because we found at that time, and that's three years ago, that there tended to be a strategy that wasn't carried on from elementary to high school. And that includes homework, responsibility to the parents, responsibility of the teachers to keep the parents informed. Those were some of the things that we found, that some schools had it, some schools didn't. And that strategy is very important if you want to get children into the learning mode.
Okay, so what you're saying is that there really wasn't a coherent plan between the consultants to come up with an overall strategy? There was kind of a loose strategy at each school?
Between consultants at a school but not totally. That we saw and that was one of our recommendations, that that strategy, from elementary to high school. Next, we saw that some of the schools, when they were preparing their programs between first and second, because that's when the first AYP is taken on the third grade, that they didn't make sure the ground was covered so that the students were actually reading at third grade. Because at the end of third grade, according to our model, that model might be wrong, but according to our model, most students should be reading at third grade. If they're not, that deficiency starts to grow because the textbooks are written at the fourth grade, the fifth grade, the sixth grade. And so if they don't have the vocabulary comprehension at the third grade, then they're always going to be one to two years behind.
Yeah, the problem just gets worse, isn't it?
That's right. And right, the discrepancy is then people dropping out of school at the end of middle school or high school because they've already had three or four years of failing.
Okay, well, getting on to kind of a hot topic here, that's the topic of the school mergers. You see signs on just about every other house in town voicing opinion one way or another. Now, you voted in favor of the merger initially and then you recently have indicated that you now are against it. Can you explain why this is...
Well, first of all, I just want to tell you that the teachers association is not backing me because they think I'm a loose cannon. I explained to them that I did vote for it, but I did tell them that that was a mistake. And if that means I'm a loose cannon, well, then I'm a loose cannon. But if you make a mistake and you realize your mistake and you have enough confidence to come out, I think that's important. I made a mistake because the figures that I was looking at were square footage per child, baseball fields, boiler rooms, roofs, painting. These are the figures I looked at. And then there was this issue about spare areas where schools weren't at capacity. I do believe that when we have too many students in a school, you're going to see a whole bunch of portables. And I didn't see any portables except for Northlake. But those portables were used primarily for the gardening program, for special ed, whose children had some behavior problems that might be a distraction, and for a library. And so those are, I think, legitimate places for portables. But to have regular classrooms and have kindergarten... One parent in the neighborhood was upset because they had, a couple of years ago, kindergarten class in a portable. And the students had to walk across a driveway where you had parked cars to go to the office. Of course, if the teacher didn't have a pair of ed, the child would have to go by itself. So, that was questionable. But my problem with portables is that when you have teachers in a portable, my experience in teaching for 40 years, there is miscommunication. It's so much easier if you're next door to your third or fourth grade teacher to communicate. But if you're in a portable, it's very difficult. You have to make sure you have appointments to talk to one another.
Yeah, reflecting back on my own education, I spent one year in a portable in a class. And I remember how disruptive it was because the kids had to leave the portable to use the restroom and going to the school gymnasium, which meant that you were going in there oftentimes when the gymnasium wasn't used by other classes and things. I personally don't have a good experience with portables.
These portables do have their own restrooms. They do have... Now, I'm not saying all of them do, but the ones that I worked with do, did have their restrooms. But still, when you're in a portable, it's not as good as a classroom. You have acoustic problems, you have a... And you don't have the room, so chairs need to be pushed together. You don't have the versatility you have in a regular.
Yeah, the other issue I remember from that is they placed the portables right next to the playground. And so we had kids bouncing balls off the side of the building and running under the windows, which was always a disruption. So, yeah, I'm not a huge fan of portable.
I just remember my days in Los Angeles when we had to put portables and we couldn't put it in the parking lot because of security. They had to be behind the fence. The only area behind the fence is playground. So, at one time, we had 20 portables. So, that meant that we had to have different recess times because there wasn't enough room because of portables. And then we had to make sure there was adequate room between the portables for the fire codes so the kids could evacuate.
Okay, so you mentioned that initially, when you voted for the merger, you acted on the information that you were provided with. And now you've reversed your stance.
Right.
What came up that actually...
Well, when we were having discussions, there were some people in our 10-person group and also in the 40, kept on questioning the statistics. Now, I'm from three school districts and I have faith in statistics. If the honesty and the integrity of the person preparing it, I know you can make some mistakes, but I believe in integrity and I assumed that was correct. What I didn't appreciate was after I voted for it, I found in the newspaper, the roof at one of the middle schools was off by almost three quarters of a million dollars. That was just blew me away because then I questioned the other information that I received. If that could be off, then all of the other things could have been off. And that's what caused me to start looking at school scores, test scores. And when I kept on looking at scores and going back for two or three years, when I really had input as one of the community members, I saw the scores weren't going up, they were going down. And my point here, just because of my background at the university as well as the school district, is that we have to look at strategy. The kids are kids, whether they're here in Washington or they're in LA. They're children and they need to... We need to meet them where they're at. So, kids being constant, having high, median and low kids in every school district, it's the materials, the methods and the strategy that pulls them up. Without that strategy, the methods, the materials and the in-service doesn't work. It's just like having a car with an engine and then not putting fuel in the tank. I mean, it's there, it's all there, but without the fuel. And I think strategy is the fuel. If you have the fuel, then the engine will work and the car will move.
So, are you aware of any studies that have been done on schools or school districts where they've implemented this merger strategy and what were the outcomes of that?
Well, just close to this area, just across the river actually, in Ranier, they had the same problem two or three years ago. And so what they did was, the administration then, it's not the same administration that's there now, but the administration then sold off all of the schools and moved all of the grade levels into one building. So, you have kindergarten through high school on the same campus. If you go there, you'll see it. It's practical in a way, but impractical in another way because it's important that the older students be good models. But when you have one or two older students who are not good models and smoking on the other side of the fence, that's not good. Or using language that you probably wouldn't appreciate, that's not good. That's a problem. Now, you have private schools that do that same thing, but there's a certain code. There's a dress code, there's a language code, there's a behavior code, and there's buy-in by parents because they have to pay for it, out of their, you know, the uniform, everything. So, they pay taxes, but they don't make use of this because they go outside of the system. So, that's relatively different. I just know that in Ranier, they're still having problems because they took short-term solutions to long-term problems. And they're still... And if people want to go visit, it's right across the river. But in LA, we had some of the same problems. In the school district, we had the same problems. We did sell some schools. Unfortunately, we sold the schools in the lower socioeconomic areas. And what happened was, we have more people there because you have two or three families living in a house. So, they have more children, I mean, there's more children, plus you tend to have more children. And those schools, at the end of my 40 years, had a good portion of their playground taken up by portables. While in the upper-middle class, there were no portables because of people reframing from having big families, considering they had big payments on their house, they didn't rent, so they couldn't afford it. While the other people tended to be renters and three or four families in the same house.
Now, I know I'm spending a lot of time on this merger issue, but it is a big issue here in town. The proposal calls for selling this one of the school properties or a couple of the school properties. Is now a good time to do that when the real estate prices are depressed? It seems like holding on to the asset until things recover, you know, hopefully they will.
I'm a property owner and I've always owned lots of, not lots of property, but rental property. My whole strategy in owning rentals is I buy the rentals fairly inexpensive. When the economy is up and when I increase the rental, then I have a history to the buyer that I can get a lot more from the rental. That's when I sell them. I don't sell them when the market's low. I just think that right now, because the economy's so bad, whatever money you can get for the property is going to be far less than what you could get it if the economy is up. The problem with selling the property, and this happened in the other school district, we sold these properties, then we had the influx of students. The only way we could afford to do it, because then we didn't have a lot of money, was to buy these inexpensive, and I say they are inexpensive, and they're not very sound, and they have fire problems and an earthquake, they do jiggle around a little. So, that's how we solved the problem. The problem is that when people come into a neighborhood and they see a portion, a good portion of the playground taken up with portables, they don't want to buy that in that area. And usually, the prices for homes are depressed there. When they see schools with no portables, like there's one school in upper-middle-class neighborhood that I worked in, it was used for band and drama. Because they didn't have an auditorium and when the band, they had a school marching band, so they had one music instructor and he taught band all the time. Now, that's impossible if you have a complex where the noise can get out. But they had a portable, yes they did, but it was for specific use only. It wasn't for a regular class. It was for the band, it was for the drama class, it was for the parents when they got together in their music.
A multi-purpose room?
Yeah, a multi-purpose room, but not used for a regular class, just for a music class.
Now, it's my understanding that the school board wants to vote on this merger and come up with a decision before the upcoming elections. Why such an urgency on this issue?
I don't know. Because there's enough money in the budget to carry this school for another 18 to 20 months. There's enough money in contingency fund to handle this issue. I don't understand it. I totally believe that this whole issue of selling was instigated by the administration to cover the poor grades. Because people are distracted by this and they're not looking over here at the poor grades. If they took as much money that they're using right now in consultants to go around and estimate the cost of running a school and property and fixing roofs, if they took all that money and put it into working with kids, you'd see the scores going up rather than wasting it in a superfluous play. I mean, I questioned their strategy. Theirs is to close and sell and then stack the classrooms. Because there's no way, if you sell the properties, yes, you can put them in portables, but portables are not what I consider a nice area for kids to go to school in.
Well, moving on here, now currently, they don't have any teacher representation on the school board.
They do have a teacher association that represents the teachers for grievances and also for wages. They do have a president, they have an association. But, and that association has recommended some people to run. Not me, but some, they are backing some candidates, but not me. And I told you before, they think I'm a Benedict Arnold because I voted against and changed my mind. But I did, I did it honestly. I could have sort of said that I didn't, but I did. I'm honest. But I not only tell them that I made a mistake, but I tell them why I made a mistake. And I feel that's important.
Well, do you think it would be beneficial to have a member of the teachers union on the school board, have one position reserved, so you have that important input?
In Los Angeles, they have one representative from the union. In the school that Chicago came from, in Sarita's, one person is backed by the union. And that one person is privileged to certain information about negotiations that some other people wouldn't know. But they do, they do do that. They ran an election in LA and a member of the union ran against another politician who had a bankroll of 2.5 million and it was sanctioned by the mayor and the city council. And that one teacher won with less than $10,000. We're talking about 4.5 million people. So, that was a pretty, pretty good demonstration that labor needs to get on the wagon and be represented on the board.
Okay. Now, you mentioned that not enough money's going into things that really counts for the kids' education. It goes to a lot of superfluous and supportive things or, you know, facilities that may not be needed or ideas, consultants.
The problem with consultants, consultants don't live in the school. They come, and I want to tell you, I'm a consultant too. I was a consultant for the Department of Education in Hawaii. I came in, I was given a task, I did my task, they evaluated me and they let me go. And then after I came there, they hired another consultant, consultant came in, did what they were supposed to do and then, you know, was relieved. Consultants have a short life. No matter what we do, we're in a losing situation. If you teach them too much, they become independent, they don't need you. If you don't do the right job, they get upset with you and they fire you. So, either way, you're going to lose.
So, with school funds in general, do you have a lot of confidence in the current school board and...
I believe that the members of the school board are honest, hardworking, concerned citizens. I believe. They're being buffaloed, just like I was buffaloed when I was on all these committees. And they have their own lives to live. I mean, they have businesses, they have family. And they're given documents. And for them to question every item, I mean, it's impossible. I was at a board meeting the other day that started at seven and when I left at 10, they were still in and needed. So, I mean, sometimes you're just worn out and you say, "Okay, okay." I mean, at 12 o'clock, you gotta go home. You have another job, you have another life. I do believe that those school board members are sincere about what they're doing. They just don't understand the strategy in education because they come from different fields. There's nothing wrong with coming from business. I own my own private school and preschool. I also own my own business. The bottom line is that if you don't succeed, you go out of business. But in education, if you don't succeed, you still have the funds to keep on going. But if you're doing the wrong thing, as I can see in this school district, I don't blame the teachers for it. I don't even blame the building leaders. The essence of strategy comes from the top. Because they have an overall vision of how the schools are working. They can see it because they're not in those buildings. They need to see it from the outside. So, they can see when strategies are working and when they're not. So, they can intercede at any time and make subcorrections. And I find that's a responsible, responsible way. Many times, I've been in school districts where superintendents have been asked to leave because they didn't have that overall control. It's not control so much. It's aware of the strategies working or not working. School boards get upset when a superintendent says one thing and the school does another.
So, do you think there's a good working relationship between the school board and the superintendent with the schools themselves and the teachers and administrators at the schools?
I don't believe so. Now, I'm not privileged to any information and I purposely stay out of teachers lounge. Because I think teachers need that lounge to decompress and relax. And sometimes, you know, they'll relax in a verbal way and I don't want to hear it. So, I always tend to stay in the classroom and just run in there for goodies that they might have.
Okay. Well, that's all the questions I have for today, but I appreciate you taking the time to share your views with me and...
I'd like to...
Anything else you'd like to...
I'd like to summarize. I read the newspaper and the Daily News, Sunday, May 19th, "Can three schools fit into two?" The reporter, Leslie Slate, was pursuing mathematics behind the merger and she was working with diagrams and stuff on space and expense and so on.
Phys...
Right. The reporter was asking the wrong question. The question this reporter, this newspaper and this community should be pursuing is the mathematics behind why only two-thirds of the schools, that's Mark Morris High School and Columbia Valley Gardens Elementary, met their AYP or appropriate yearly progress. That meant that there were small gains in the other ones, but the rest of the schools, 11 out of 13, 11 out of 13 didn't meet their AYPs. And that include elementary schools, middle school and a high school. If we play this game of percent, that means only 15% passed and 85% failed. Now, you and I know that that's not an acceptable rate. There has to be some sort of reason for that. I think the school board and the superintendent should sit down and look at their strategy. Rather than selling property, they should be considering why that strategy didn't work. Their money, the resources and the personnel should go into that area. If you sell a piece of property, later on, you can't buy their property because of land values. And the only thing you can do is start packing the kids into portables. When you come into a community and you see portables in the school, you'll find that the real estate is lower than in those areas where there are no portables. It's just a measurable thing, you can see it. And so, for people coming into this area right now, most of the schools have some, have some portables. But when you, when they start adding to have four or five or maybe the whole third grade class in portables, you start separating the faculty, separating the students and separating the strategy, you know, and separating the community. So, I think that our community should be looking at the rate of passing. Now, the administration says, "Well, these are variables we don't have control on." Why is it then in New York and LA and many other places where they have ghettos and badios, they have schools succeeding when the children are from single-family homes and have social problems? Why can they succeed and our students not succeed? Why can they succeed and our students not succeed? I think that if we say everyone is getting an opportunity to learn, then we should show it in our strategy. And the strategy should be backed up by empirical truth. So that means kids should know some skills, and they should be able to take those skills outside of the classroom and use them in the community. So that's my problem with it. I like to quote George Bernard Shaw, "Some men see things as they are and ask why. I dream of things that never were and ask why not." This is a quote from a man who thought, "Outside of the box, off the table, out the door, and into the world of possibilities." A world where every problem is an opportunity for an imaginative and creative person, be that a teacher, be that the superintendent, be that a student. We just need honesty, integrity, and character, those values that make us kind, considerate, giving, loving, civilized, and unique to all the world. People come here because of our education system is so diverse.